There you go. Have a great meeting.
All right, great, thank you. Well, everybody, it is Tuesday, August twentieth, twenty twenty-four. We are hanging on to the last days of summer. We'd like to call this meeting over. I'm going to ask Cantfield, second by, and Miss Conley, all those in favor?
Aye.
She knows us. The Citrus Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect for our meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner, even when there is disagreement in the value of the participation of our community. We want all participants to be able to merge, normalize, minoritize, communicate with welcome and respect them. We ask our community members and all participants to commit to meet standards and support and respect our community. With that, are there any, let's see, any block ends? Seeing one, that's anything on the agenda? And we see none. Let's move on. And we have no report of the town administrator. He is unavailable tonight. So we will move on to our first item. So I'm going to be calling up the Citrus Housing Authority. There's going to be a joint appointment to fill a vacancy. So William E. Gary and Dan and everyone else. Come on up. So how are you all? All right. So again, so this is a joint. Everyone here, so I'll let you. Call your meeting board.
So. Can I do a roll call first?
You roll call.
That's a roll call. Bill Capri. Being as Herb Osborne.
We'll give her one second. Give him just one second. Herb, there you should go.
Will that unmute her?
Yep, yep, should be able to.
Herb, could you text me your questions? He's in. We have a form.
I can't hear you. How many do I have?
Herb.
If he's not responding, we don't need a motion. We probably need a motion.
I don't think anyone can hear you.
Yeah.
I don't think anyone can hear you. No one can hear you.
We don't need a motion.
That you should direct yourself to where that's actually where the microphone is. We just sort of found it.
All right. We just did the, the attendance of roll call. Next is the motion to support Bill William E. Gary as our next commissioner. And I have, would be a step kind of form vote from August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. And let that stand up as I submit.
All right, all right. So we're just, let's back us up a second. So we'll get a little explanation to folks. It's largely a little unusual. We have two different boards, but what is going on? So. Everyone here from folks at home, this is Citrus Housing Authority and the head of resignation. John, John Lane, who's I am trying to fill, someone to step forward to fill that, fill that vacancies. We're, we're going to recommend someone to go forward. So if you'd like. Again. Tell us about the person who filled that vacancy with and then reasons why.
Mr. Gary comes to us with a long history of public service in several arenas dealing with the same population that we deal with in public housing. He comes with lots of skills, both in the population and in administration, largely in administration. We've had several conversations with Mr. Gary and I, in my experience, find Mr. Gary to be really intentional and sincere.
Um, no. As Dan had mentioned, I worked for the Department of Children and Families for about almost forty-five years, thirty-seven in direct service, both as a clinician as well as a manager. And then eventually as an IT person as well as give net merge clinical and managerial kinds of items. So, so as Dan said, while working as a direct service worker with, as a clinician, I should say, with the Department of Children and Families, I had primarily our, our population served by public housing almost entirely. I shouldn't say almost, a large portion of our population was living in public housing. I was a tenant myself my whole life until I got married and moved to Citrus in nineteen eighty-one. Raised my kids here and so Citrus has been a part of my life. Going back to the fifties when I was growing up in an apartment in Dorchester, my mother loved Citrus. It brought, brought me down. I saw a new truck when I was like seven or six years old. So anyway, other than that, I have nothing else to recommend.
So we as a board recommend Mr. Gary as the next commissioner.
Next. Anybody else have anything?
I was just going to say that working for TCF is part of the miller population and I think is a real strength. Because they understand what states is right over work, the OHLC is very similar operation, I think. So I think that's another thing that makes it right.
I should, I should add, I should add, when I was the manager of TCF, I was, at one point, I was a director of family-based services for the entire state. So I always saw a huge number of contracts and that kind of thing. So I, I do have some experience in terms of that aspect beyond the clinical realm.
First of all, first thing of all of you, all over, is thank, a thankless job. It's also very rewarding, as we know. I think you're stepping forward to volunteer. All of us here in town, we have their trust in you for, for everything you do. So with that, I'll open up my questions.
No questions. I just want to note for, for the listening public that this appointment is, it is unusual to fill a vacancy, but it will be only until the next town election. And then it's a, well, there's a, on the election.
Understood.
So it will be till May of twenty twenty-five, not the balance of the term. They'll have a chance to weigh in themselves. But thank you again for staying.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you for volunteering. We need people like you.
So, thank you for volunteering. And just for the record for people at home, looking at your experience, it's like, it's unbelievable. So we are going to be delighted to have you and we appreciate you stepping up. Really, there's so much you can contribute. Your, your history goes back to before I was in high school. So I think that's fabulous. There's nothing good than a good experience. But thank you for volunteering.
You're very good. Thank you.
Yes, thank you again. Perfect experience for the folks. I appreciate it.
Both a good match.
Yeah. All right. Move to approve an interim appointment of William E. Gary to the vacancy on the Citrus Housing Authority until the annual town election be held in May of twenty twenty-five, at which time the housing authority position will be placed on the ballot to fill a vacancy for the remainder of the term.
Look, this is our second. Phil, favor.
I will have a roll call.
I will have a roll call.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Mr. Go Judge.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Aye.
Ms. Cantfield.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Nikki and Ms. All in favor. And then I guess you, your board as well. So give me if I mispronounce your name. Ms. Lahey. Ms. Capri. Yes. Mr. Osborne, if you could unmute yourself and confirm you.
I haven't asked Mr. Osborne to unmute. He's, he is currently not.
Yeah.
Herb, if you could text me, I'd appreciate it.
You, you could text him and ask him. You can stop by. You have four. No, he's the third.
Might be a stain.
Mr. Gary, your appointment and Ms. All that doesn't get, he's, he's a voting member. So we just need Mr. Osborne to.
It says he can't unmute.
I've asked, I've asked him several times.
Let, let, let me get a second. Let's see if we can get Mr. Osborne in the bottom left-hand corner of your Zoom screen. You're going to push that unmute button. If you can't see.
The microphone.
I'm going to send you a alert right there on your screen, Mr. Osborne.
So.
Mr. Osborne, on your Zoom, look to the bottom left-hand corner of your screen. You see.
It's just, it says it just more.
Is his volume not turned on? Can he?
Can we just call him? Just call him on that phone and tell him he's bothering him.
Yes, yes.
Good idea.
He was the one that asked, he was the one that asked me to, to volunteer. So.
Aye.
Hi, Mr. Osborne.
How are you? Do you hear me?
We hear you. So I'm just doing a, well, this is Shari Young. I'm doing the roll call vote with the select board. The select board is all voting in as in a favor by roll call. And you are the third vote on your board to vote yea or nay for Mr. Gary.
Yea, of course.
Yea, of course.
We all heard it, everybody heard.
We all heard it. Unanimous. That's a unanimous vote for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Herb.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Welcome aboard. Thank you. Welcome aboard. I don't know if you may have kind of close out the meeting probably and.
Just lost track of what we're posting.
You come back.
I can get back. Okay. Let's, let's close our meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need, we need to close the meeting. So would you make a motion to close the meeting, please?
I, I do my move to close the meeting.
Seven.
All the family.
I, I roll call.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, they have to roll call.
Roll call. Okay, so roll call Mr. Osborne made a motion to respect.
Yes.
Second, and the votes, Mr. Osborne?
Uh, yea, you can close the meeting.
Mr. Cantfield, yea, yes. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Ken.
All right. Um, can I add one comment? Of course. I've been in Citrus and Dark Creek for thirty years and it is really nice to have a board that understands regulations, the change and the evolution of regulations. And here's somebody who's actually going to help me explain the craziness of regulations. So that's the point, but it does get crazy.
Well.
Yay.
Well done.
Thank you.
We're here for you. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. And it is for your governor. Next, we have. Mike, we have a donation to the Shellfish and Peppersey in Bradford. And Julie White might need to add the Shellfish.
Yes.
God's. How are you? Tell us all about it. Very nice.
Yes, donation. So a very nice donation by Julian Bracken White. They are actually Marchville residents, but they actually voted in the town to support Citrus Harbor. They've been great proponents of the Shellfish relays and paths, as well as when we closed back a few years ago for the young population being had. But it brings surgeries. They were stronger opponents of the river open. And now they're donating two hundred and fifty dollars to its community, Marchville Citrus, which will go towards our future Shellfish Propagation Project, which is pretty awesome, because it's purely, I wonder if the boat will go down. So maybe next week. But nonetheless, that project will be done for this year. It'll be two hundred and fifty of the co-ops in the middle of the summer. Last year we did one census that were open it. And we're also looking to increase more areas for local recreational walkouts, or just especially the hamrocks out of the South River. So rather than having people go out and do kayaks and small boats, they actually walk out to the river. That's kind of the goal.
That's a, we usually have, the receiving usually happen in August, September.
Yeah, August, September, and then you take six, six to thirty, sixty days for the co-ops, the permits, the boxes off, then you go out and test the means.
And then once they're clear. The timing is up. Yeah. But the good news is they come along through the north.
Yeah, you do.
That's the pitch for to get called through to help. But we have no choice of volunteers. You actually need a lot of volunteers.
Well, this, the marriage is so nice to split and, and it's just lovely.
And Nancy has a good spot for him to get to our bridge down.
That was less than waiting.
With Brad too.
Yes.
Anything, everything. I think it was wonderful.
Yes.
What's wrong? For things to be said, we don't have a lot to say.
Yes, thank you.
That's a lot of motion. Move that the select board accept the donation of two hundred and fifty dollars from Bradford and Julie White of Marchville to the Shellfish gift account for continued efforts of plan receiving. Move, Mr. Gilmore second and I, Ms. Cantfield, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes. All right. I guess the meeting kind of.
Yes.
Kind of odd. So while you're there. Like, how are you? Tell us why. Yeah, he's annoying, moderates.
So, took the town seat for about a long time, over twenty-five years at the position Citrus with my first Coast Guard station. Was a part of Harvard for five years. I knew the Harvard pretty well, very well, all the records very well. Know many people in the town. I've attended a few put away meetings, both joint, our Citrus and, and only open time. Not that I have enough to do, but I see there's a lot of changes going on around the harbor and needs are increasing. More boats are coming, things like, yeah, the rivers are a lot visitier. I think it'll have leverage, the man inside of it, definitely financially. I need to partner more, see more partnerships with the other port partners, like Chamber, Citrus, things like that. If they've done, I have noticed on the waterways agenda that they have been repetitive topics. I think the address goes a little bit, see, and move the pockets along. And come out where I can. Obviously, even my background, where I come from, the work, retired Coast Guard for three, thirty-two years. Service for active twenty-three, during, came into the D one, retired as a whole five commander. Two of them have, this is pretty commendable. It's pretty good. I like it. And your show for your board was two thousand.
So you're saying you're Seabrook.
That's Seabrook. More downward than that. Yeah.
It's, I know, I know. Because we get these resident.
Yeah.
And I say it all, but it's amazing that the people living in town, the reservation trap is on. I just say the gist, I know. An exceptional background, except no. Hold on.
Yeah, obviously, that'd be a, I don't know. I know, oh my gosh. You are willing to put something else on, that are on your head and your experience and and, and the understanding and our share of what our experience is.
We do more close now, when we go, even working closer, Marchville City will get along phenomenal, incredible communities. But still, there's a lot, a lot more to be done. There's a lot going on in the river, there's a lot going on in both harbors that we have. Both harbors are ranked pretty high in the state for carpentrys. And that's an area we, we, how we address as well, getting more, things like that. So in behind the scenes, work with the hard methods that can help out. Does a great job obviously, but no one person can't do it all.
Well, I'm especially happy because it's good to have a good relationship with the Marchville Citrus. And I appreciate the fact that you've been so helpful on Shellfish, the fire's great order. You know the community well, the whole culture as well. And I much appreciate you to bond, having a very good relationship with Marchville. So I'm forward to have you here. But I appreciate it that you can.
Um, I will say it's really hard to find a lot of time for this board. I don't think you could. And I have enjoyed working with you, Mike, on the Shellfish Committee. I also think it's an opportunity to work. It would be a good, since it's an opportunity to work more closely with Marchville. Anything from grants to, you know, more regional, cooking more regional, funding on the salt of the profits. Because things are so cost, especially the closer you get to the water, it seems to like increase the price. So, um, thank you for setting up the whole work place.
I have no questions. I think it's delightful to see that we could have such a great relationship with the town. It's your all year. Really appreciate that. Before it gets to work.
Will work.
You're tired of Coast Guards.
I'm sorry. That's, that's quite a, quite a free time. Little. There, we vote, we vote here. Definitely. We, yeah, we have any, any more for this?
We have a lot of ready for this.
Oh, the other person's not.
Yes.
Oh, no, that's not, you're right. They don't have any more.
You have no more. You can be ready.
Okay, so we're, we're, hopefully we can do this all later. We have one. Yeah, so we're gonna. But all later. Thank you. All right, take your time. Thank you. All right. Is Gary moving? Do I ask to be a zoom?
I don't believe so, but I thought I could shout call her so that she can come away. So.
All right.
There's a lot of someone else that he's possibly.
Uh, what could we do?
Bruce is not on.
We did the contract awards.
This, the hallway of Kevin Capri today. What timing? I don't know if I can smell. Oh, road salt again.
I hate to even bring it up at this time of year, but we got, we got road salt.
Feels like it.
Yeah, they just get one.
But I'm sorry, we'll start. Who do you want to start?
Gas. So, gas and diesel contracts, we're, we're doing, we're sticking with the state bid list. We match up all the state bid lists and get that pricing spread. And it's a variable pricing spread. We get discounts, Nancy pays in three days, so we get extra a lot to set up. And fluctuate with the quantity moderate of the gas. Is that any of that? And we've had good luck with Burke to come through with storms and wanted to give it to everybody about pictures.
Right, so the. Twenty-three percent of that, okay. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so it's all from, it's all from the bid list. Prices have kind of settled a little bit, right, compared to.
Yeah.
So that's good.
We did a full poll on it, looking at all the prices. So they, they. They fluctuate quite a bit.
Great. You take a great point. They're a company in a, when you need them.
Yeah. And I mean, we're still saying, you know, it's two sixty-eight, you know, gas.
Yeah. Uh, questions? All right, so. Motion?
Move to work contract and purchase of gas and so the state contract, ENB five four, and the multiple of Shellford Diesel, which is a K contract, ENB five three, the then for a paper, two eighty-four Eastern half, just task period of August twenty twenty. Point two, August thirty-first, point two five, the road salt not received by the pass ball.
Second. Mr. Cantfield second, Ms. Conley, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Is there any reason that we not, uh, we need not to miss the, the members of the waterways before we go? They're in the online network and we, and then just wondering if we needed their input, right? Because it's sort of confusing. Are you, I think I have a chance to talk to. All right, that's fine. I just didn't want them to evaporate.
Yeah, no, I got it.
Say, oh, gosh. Those are probably.
And I think that we're.
Yeah, we're good. Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. We are.
All right. Next. Salt.
That was the gas and diesel. It does not need separate or just one?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It was sweating the same line.
One single.
Yeah.
Uh, the next contract is for our salt. We do the same thing. We go through the state bid list through Area Five. And what we do is. They usually have the best prices we've seen in the past. Um, last year's salt was fifty-nine sixty-six per ton. So we had some extra, we don't want to call it extra, but we had money in the snow account. We built up our salt shed with as much salt as we could, because I reach out to some of the different salt suppliers and find out where the prices can go. So hearing the price was going to drop, I didn't know how high it was going to drop. Work with Nancy to do fill the shed up with as much salt as we can. So hopefully, uh, you know, it's gone up by nine dollars a ton. So hopefully, hopefully we'll do this.
We'll see where it goes. Yeah, hopefully. Yeah, they do. I remember that. And that's looking at this net, you're right. It's a huge, it's a huge savings. That's great. And fill up that shed. It's like, thank you. That's really good. Questions? We will have road salts. Motion?
Yes. Move to award a contract for the salt, I think, the purchase of road salt at the unit price of sixty-eight point eighty-two per ton for some domestic contract, BEH one one nine.
Ms. Cantfield second, second by Gilmore, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
And Bruce is on. Yes, Bruce is on.
Is on.
Oh, great.
If you want to do so.
Yeah. Bruce is ready. We can do the multi-unit building water connection videos. Where is that?
It's before. It was.
Um, so I'm here.
Oh, we, we hear you. We hear you fine. So if you can hear us, that's great. If you hear us.
Yes, I can.
Perfect. Um, so I'll, Bruce, I'm going to just tee this up a little bit and then I'll let you touch that. I think he's got a lot to add. So for folks at home and for the board members, this is something that the Water Resource Committee has been working on for commissions. Worked for a long, long time and Bruce went back to see kind of the history of hookup fees. There's kind of this little loophole between buildings and units. And was that, this, I, this was actually recommended to this board a few years ago. But, um, we did, for some reason, we only took up one of the two recommendations. So anyway, so Bruce. I will let you kind of talk about these hookup fees.
Sure. Um, and, um, it's at the very recent history, the, it's changed.
That may I have?
What are we? I'm sorry, I missed something.
No, just we're having a little trouble here, but try one more time.
Okay. Um, so I'm in an Airbnb in Sprucehead, Maine, and I'm hoping the signal is strong enough to make this work well.
You sound perfect right now. So we'll get the Reader's Digest version.
Right. So, um, the hookup fees have changed over time. As Andrew mentioned, there seemed to be a miss a couple of years ago. So, um, the hookup fees have changed over time, as Andrew mentioned, there seemed to be a miss, um, a couple of years ago, a few years ago. Um, the Water Resource Commission was very interested in getting. The smart meters installed. And that was the focus, and, um. I guess the issue between master meters and individual. Um, connection fees got missed at some point. Anyway. Um, Kevin asked us to take a look at, um, the hookup fees, and. We did, we had some discussions, uh, some of our discussions were around tiering, uh, fees. If there was a motivation to encourage or, um, make less costly, small apartment condo buildings in the designated commercial areas. Um, we thought we needed to discuss that as a potential. Uh, obviously, Green Bush has been built out fairly well at this point. Um. The situation is more, the soul being implemented there. Um. Considering. Um, things like the overage for the new water treatment plant and all the additional work that needs to be done. Maintenance-wise, et cetera, for the water system overall. Um, the Water Resource Commission decided that we would submit to the, uh, select board. Forty thousand dollar cost per connection to the water system. Our focus was on new buildings, uh, apartments and condos, but, um. Um, we didn't really consider somebody owning a piece of property and adding an apartment to their existing property. But this potentially could cover that as well.
Excellent, thank you. Um, so, Bruce, a handout with all the. So, the question for this board, it, it's really. Couple of things, number one, we need to satisfy, do nothing. Two, we could. One, we could charge every single unit in town the same, be it a building, and then every condo, three units. Uh, or we could have building rate, and then a lesser rate for each apartment per time with every person. Again, this is only for new hookups, this is for new construction, this is going forward. Uh. Again, it was recommended that. Years ago, we do at least something that every. Home is charged, the matchable bill.
Uh, and Andrew?
Yes.
I just want to add, I just want to add more, one more variable to that, uh, similar to what you were suggesting about adjusting the. Uh, the per condo fee. Um, one variable could be having a lower fee for smaller buildings and a higher fee for big buildings. So if somebody came in and said, I want to put in an eighty, eighty apartment building in here, we may not want to give that.
Right, yeah, or we could do some sort of a hybrid. Uh, but let's get walking before we get running, so let's see. What would take the temperature of what we're thinking here from the board?
Clarification question.
Sure.
On this spreadsheet, calculations, I can't, not really pull up, I don't matter here. I was under the impression with the record that, that this was based on each building, you know, regardless of the unit number. Would get. Uh, so there's three buildings, it's three buildings.
Right.
And the way you just said it, I thought it sounded like. And, and that's what these numbers figure out. And it's on the building, not on the twenty-four units.
Right, so if six buildings, it'd be twenty-four.
And they are all charged fourteen thousand.
Just the building.
Right. A little bit, what I thought I heard you just say is one area, one, one way to do is to charge each unit.
Yes.
A, hopefully, as well.
Correct, that's what we're talking about, that. Per unit cost, that's the problem.
I, I, I understand it to be, if you're building more than one building. In a parcel, and you're going to add, say, six buildings, your first would be fourteen thousand dollars, but your other, your other buildings might be discounted, that's the plan, it looks to me.
That one would have to be fourteen thousand.
Cause I don't, I don't really support that, I think everybody pays fourteen thousand as it is, or we've discussed that actual way inside. So.
Is your chair going to be, it's like, it's ready?
Thank you.
That would be good.
That's. Sorry, I'm going to go in.
Yeah.
Um, in the past, what it used to be, it'd be each unit would be charged a fee, you know, per unit. When they changed it, the way it was worded, we, we had to change, we realized. It said a building would only get a single fee, and then the other units won't pay a couple hundred dollars or five hundred dollars per unit. So I brought that up to Bruce's attention, in the past, we were charging per unit, and now we're charging per building, so it makes a difference. In, in where it goes, to all depths. What I have, then Nancy did the spreadsheet, I haven't seen the spreadsheet, so I can't comment on it.
Oh, okay, that, I mean, the purpose was there.
So when I was just looking, I was saying, you know, it was, I'm not saying it's revenue, but this cost affected with each individual unit going in, it's. It's only built a ten unit, built, you know, a building ten units, and they're only paying fourteen grand as opposed to, um, some of these, like, full products on the other big places paid.
Okay. Thank you, I just wasn't really considering. Now I get it. Well, I look at it as, there is a hookup fee according to this spreadsheet for every building. But within the building. Here could be, depends on how many units there are, it could be that there are ten units, we want to charge. I don't think you call that a hookup fee, you could call it something else, a unit fee. I think, I think the confusion comes from, we're looking at a hookup fee for the building, but then.
Meter fee for the unit.
Well, the meter fee is a different fee, right?
No, so. Hook, hookup and connection are the same, for our purposes, they're not the same.
Yes, that's, that's right.
So right now. So right now, the connection fee is what Kevin was speaking to. So.
Versus the hookup fee.
No, connection and hookup synonymous with one another.
Well.
For our purposes. Um. Right now, there are only the additional units, so if you have one, six buildings, to, to Bill Martin's point, they would pay six fourteen thousand dollar fees.
Right, I get that.
Every unit, except the first one, would pay a five hundred dollar unit fee.
Touch.
No, current, current, currently, current.
Because we got rid of smart meters. Sorry, I remembered the one, the one, the one master meter. These units have their own smart meters. Yes, their own, right, and each unit now has their own smart meter.
Correct, so the question is whether each unit should pay the fourteen thousand rather than the building paying, old building paying hookup.
Well, how would, how would it bridge up? Think of it that way, where is it going?
What do you look up? So there's. The same.
It's per building.
I'm sorry?
Single meters per unit.
To be, but where is the hookup?
There's one.
The.
There's one main hookup for the building, and then you're metering off, or you're not?
Correct.
Correct, so why would you compare somebody, your one main hookup per unit? This is the way to.
It's a problem.
So the argument is that for every, everyone that lives in town, every dwelling, if you're a single family home, or you have a condo, and you have ten, ten in there. You're still, you're still hooking up, you're being part of the water system, granted, it's a charge to be part of our water system. So we can afford, then we pay for it. Um, and that's kind of what we used to do, for dwelling. And we're supposed to this building.
Yeah, I don't know why it's created for building.
There are a couple other variables.
Andrew, to your point, that's why we're starting on fourteen thousand per unit.
Right.
So the two other variables are, so a single-family home. Correct me if I'm wrong on this, a single-family home builds a, an accessory dwelling. They pay fifty percent. Because it's a smaller dwelling. Is that correct, right? Yeah, so there, so the way the rights are, they're coming up, I put the granny shack in my backyard, I have to pay the connection, let's call it connection fee. I have to pay the connection fee, and even if it hooks into my main, uh, path of, of seven thousand dollars. So that's one, the other variable is, that I, that I'm urinating on is. Our master plan. Very clearly wants to support affordable housing. So. That's one of those unintended consequences, I totally understand the waterway, waterway, uh, Water Resources Commission's recommendation, they have to pay for stuff. If you're going to use our water, then you need to dance the system. But I want to be very careful that, you know, we not. Discourage, um, the, what we, we've said we want.
Okay. I totally went there, I understand that.
I can understand that too, put, and I see where you're going, but I also, would also argue that, just because it's a multiple. Multiple unit dwelling in city doesn't mean it's small.
No, I know.
So I, I see where you're going, but I would think we want to think about what size could be the finest. Because if you're going to get a multiple.
Yeah.
Unit dwelling, it could be just as large as a single family.
Could be a square.
And then.
Six people.
And then I was, this was bothering me, it wasn't adding up for me, but when Nancy said it, the meter fee is five hundred dollars. Minus one, but it's minus one per building.
Each connection fee gets you a three.
So you have a six number of buildings that gets you nine thousand.
Yeah.
So you're getting a three one per each building. Okay. That's why I originally had the embrace, then I figured out the math.
All right, may I?
Yes.
Sure. What are we trying to do here, raise the most revenue we can? Is, is that what we're trying to do here, what are we trying to do, what's our overall goal here? I mean, I think this is extremely confusing the way it is, and I'm also concerned about the way we're describing various fees. And I'm also concerned about, are we trying to incentivize people, to your point about affordable housing? I also know that the planning board is planning on putting our, some work into accessory dwellings. I also think that we, we have affordable housing issues, we have the M V T A zoning. That, um, so I guess I'm trying, trying to say, what are we trying to do here? Are we trying to incentivize people to build more, are we trying to disincentivize them? Um, what are we going to do if we just go full, full lock and just charge as much as we can for everybody? What's going to help?
So, I, I will say, my motivation for getting to this was, was one of equity and closing the loophole. That, that is free, that if you build a million-dollar condos. Those folks, and there's ten of them, they're going to share that cost, they're going to pay less, if you build a smaller, one family or two, somewhere else. Yes, we have, and don't forget, as water commissioners, we have the power, if there is some fabulous new, um. Affordable housing. We can reexamine those fees for that. Uh, for affordable housing that's there, meaning is this loophole, I see million-dollar condos paying less than somebody else. And, and we're struggling to pay the bills. It.
Because we have the issue of million-dollar condos that mad at us because we changed the water rates to tiers, and they wound up paying more than they thought was fair.
That's, right, and this is all pre-built.
Right, right, well, this is all, developers going to pay it.
Yeah, and, right, and with this, they, we closed that loophole. There are two loopholes, one that we solved, that there was no more master meters, and now we're going to close the second one. Of, kind of this workaround, how the condos are going to go for a million dollars. We all know they're going to go for.
So how do we do that?
I mean, I think we charge every dwelling the same.
Yeah, respect for debt, care, how did we get them in two thousand and eighteen? It's, here we go, how did we get to this fourteen thousand dollar number to begin with? Why did we go from six thousand five hundred to fourteen thousand in one year?
I think we needed money.
Dude, let's, we answered that case.
Yeah.
Yeah, you under the breath, we needed the breath. Sorry. We're going to.
I, it was a couple of little tracks, I kind of lost what I was, what I was going to say. The board, the board voted on the fourteen thousand dollar fee at a, at a past meeting that came out, I'm sure. They were cost, cost out in what the clients were. Uh, I brought this up originally, it wasn't a. You know, it wasn't anybody just deciding we needed money or anything else, I noticed that, and I brought it up to Bruce in one of the meetings, I said specifically. We used to charge everybody fourteen thousand dollars for water, for all brothers, everybody else, sometimes they would, and then negotiate or, or work with the board. Um, but the way the new policy was written, now the bigger buildings are kind of omitted from that. And I just brought that up to Bruce and said, now, if you were putting in another big development, technically, if you were in one building, you might. Not, not charge the same as what was being charged before, so it was more going back to what we used to charge and not having loopholes to release that. You just want, whatever it is, so that we know how to charge people in, in that space for everybody. That's, that was what we were.
Yeah, I just want to mention that, uh, unfortunately, that, those discussions predated me on the Water Resources Commission, so I can't edit any history or perspective.
Do we have, to Kevin's point, we, when we changed the water rates last time, for the connection fees, we didn't have comparables on other communities. Do we have any data or information about how other communities are addressing this situation? Right? Then the other side of the equation, right, we don't want to make our town so, so costly to build in. That, you know, with sewer and noise, it's going to discourage proper development.
Like, yeah. My understanding was that, again, since we had always done, I'm going to go back to per meter, per dwelling, we always had, most other communities do a. If I remember, we've been researching, most others do the, were dwelling, whether it's fourteen thousand or whatever the, the comp rates for other communities.
Yeah, I, I, I actually did, uh, check out a couple of communities, uh, Waymouth and, uh, we got to Waymouth and, and Marshfield and was told. Um. It's just a regular hookup fee, um, connection fee.
What does that mean?
Um, so whatever they charge. Really, for a new dwelling. Um, that's what they would include in a, in an apartment, um. Setup. Um, obviously.
One.
The, the people are, I'm pretty sure it made it too expensive, you know. If there's some, I think if you're going to have somebody that is building a single-family home paying fourteen thousand dollars. And the developer wants to develop twenty-five units. Why would, why would you give anybody a break for that, this is, it's a matter of evenness across the board. With that, living space is going to be charged the same as any other living space. I mean, and I, and I get, and I share, but like, I don't want her to be fourteen thousand for someone, you know, you want to catalyze the, the building that's there. That's good, I'm, right. And I am. Comfortable, you can maybe work that out, I'm more concerned when there's going to be the next four, five, six. Hundred units that go up and you go. Oh, you know, that, and you said you're all sure.
That's what I heard, I agree.
Because if it uses the same amount of water, is it, I reckon it's going to be a three thousand, you know.
Oh, no, I'm, I think that is very valid, and given the market the way this is right now, um, it's, it is. I don't think it'll be.
Yeah, I mean, let's say, not a water gauge, it's only the amount of water that's going to be used. Yeah.
And tell me how the accessory dwelling comes into this?
It doesn't, so.
It doesn't, or they're working on that?
Accessory dwelling right now is under our, our, our bylaws are, you have certain square footage in your house. You can build another dwelling up to be within forty percent of your square footage as the accessory dwelling. Living certain parameters, just like building anything else. And the fee that you would be charged for that water is half of what it costs. So for connection fee, you use, I mean, at one point, it wasn't a change, but because and so there's gonna be some changes, not limited to a mistake about my rights. I don't know what, no one knows yet.
Well, why don't we use that when it comes across the thing? I think this is easy enough to deal with, right? Just the way it is. It must be do that when it
But that's already.
State funding puts this together for us. So I've heard about that too.
Well, could I
Yeah.
interject a little confusion into.
Yeah, I know.
In your confusion. So why wouldn't we look at the square footage or given so that you would be charging someone, if someone is building a three thousand square ten, three thousand square foot units, that you would charge one square footage per unit basis, and that if it's a small one, you would charge less? I mean, if we're talking about, you know, not penalizing the 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 people with less means, shall we say, or the smaller like lots of rain, but the units there are very small. Um, on the other hand, if you're building a condo that has, like I said, ten three thousand square foot condos, and it goes to the million plus plus these days, it'd be viable to do that. Um, so if you do it on a square footage basis, I think it would be one where.
Are we allow, are we like that? It's it could be complicated. I don't know.
Yeah, they administrate very high.
I don't see that. I don't see that. What's the average price of a condominium right now in Sichuan? Six hundred fifty, eight hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand? So what's fourteen thousand dollars depending on whether you've got an extra thousand square feet or not? I I don't see the need for that. I think that you should keep this as streamlined as you should, if you can. If for some reason our previous board in two thousand and eighteen bought fourteen thousand dollars, that's the right number to go with, and that's the number we should stay with unless we want to change that.
But that's not what we're changing.
We're changing it per per
Per unit.
I'm saying we should apply that fourteen thousand dollar per unit.
Even if it's a three feet square foot.
That's gonna sell for seven hundred thousand dollars?
By a hundred thousand, I asked the question, would you want to exclude absolutely for a housing or a lower.
Well, so I think where you were heading was, yeah, so let's say, I mean, then the fairness. If somebody has a unit that with one bedroom, who max to be, right? Any if it's fourteen thousand dollars for that unit and the developer's renting it, it's under a cost of rent period. And that rent unit just to be, it's not, they're not, it's not a condo. And you've got an affordable issue for those who may be are looking for a lease house housing. And that's the problem, right? I don't know if we can differentiate. I these are.
I guess, again, this is just all new construction. And we're gonna, I don't know how many of those is it's gonna be, renters of us are gonna be horrible.
Right, and that's it'd be really hard from a policy team, but if we said, okay, we're gonna exclude rental or give them a lower rate, let them tomorrow and they go.
Change.
Which is totally what they.
Yes, if you had to do an exclusion, it have it should be certain square under.
A tier.
Otherwise, a tier would be a nice way of.
No, but under certain square footage.
Right, because you don't get many under that square footage.
Well, I mean, if you've got a five thousand square foot house, in theory, you could put a two thousand, like seventeen hundred square foot as accessory dwellings, backyard only they have.
But again, why don't we deal with the accessory dwelling issue when state regulations?
No, I'm talking about just they're for the fee, the fee equity. So you could, you know, to the square foot, you could have a unit as big as seventeen hundred square feet that's only paying seven thousand. Right now. Because we do have accessory dwellings in Sichuan.
Yes, it's.
Yeah.
I I just wanna clarify, I just comment on two things. Um, I just wanna alleviate some of the confusion. They have they have better charges, sewer typically does not have better charge for water unless they have their own water connection to the house. Then they're charged a single connection as a new connection.
Oh, yeah, I totally figured that out.
It's true, but somebody want you on a roll. I didn't wanna.
So for if on access accessory dwelling doesn't pay other connection fee?
Another text fee for water, sewer years, but if they have their own water connection to the house, because they have no toilets, kitchen, everything else, they may need to add a freshener. They would have to pay for a full service.
Okay.
For an accessory dwelling, just just to clarify that.
Okay.
Um, the other thing I was just gonna point out to the board is that if it was affordable housing, our smaller units coming in, they could always take the board down to some form of waiver. Similar to, well, on this, maybe they have some waivers and drags on the list.
Sorry, Nancy, you're gonna say that.
Yes, I think before mine, we can get some information about what is happening in neighborhood towns and go back to Nancy.
We work, so where's the?
Can we just move ahead, raise that to the justice part? That's not a suggestion.
Right, Bruce did look at other areas and he said, do you like that?
Is that still something that needs?
No, are we? I I hope that I will to they report back from uh Nancy's group about what other rates are like in our elite type towns with fourteen thousand, because that's where I started, where the fourteen thousand dollar.
That that was based on comps. That was definitely.
So let's visit, just make sure you're comfortable with that with input, and then we'll make a decision.
So if I could understand this, we are not looking to change. I'm calling it the hookup fee.
Connection.
The connection fee, that's spread to the side. The connection fee. We're not looking at changing that fourteen thousand. So all we're looking at is on additional per unit, let's forget about that one type of discount. On a
Multiple unit.
Multiple unit building, we're looking at either charging someone.
The increase is the frequency in what way of charging forty?
Fourteen thousand.
Forty thousand, yes.
And now all the other stuff, their recommendation is fourteen, to treat everybody the same. If you
Build six units in a building, you would give them six times fourteen without as opposed to some discounted rate for the additional units. And we've been a very good uh reason there, why? Why? Because there is, this is growth. Business. Why? Why, why, why the need for the discount? It's gonna be day before and buying the clients. That's gonna enroll their business, it's gonna have a successor, a wealthy family building coming out of the ground.
Yeah, it's really. We're going back to the way we used to do things. Right, it's the way, we're going back to the way we used to do things. It's staying there, going the same way.
Anybody that builds one house because we're changing other things, move out of the loophole. For a living well.
I was thinking that you clarified all of my confusion along the time. And I understand it, and how I think it is a great recommendation from our district advisors. What is the recommendation?
Fourteen.
Charge each unit.
Fourteen each.
Each for each each unit.
Each unit. Every unit. We.
They get five hundred this now on each one of our.
Here's a rate.
The meter.
All right, so so let's let's picture this.
Yeah.
Let's picture this. You're building a twenty four unit building.
Yes.
And they're all eight hundred square feet.
Yes.
And you're gonna charge each eight hundred square foot.
And they're all gonna sell for.
For fourteen.
How much?
Just let me finish. But but if you're building a a a same square footage building, but you're only doing five units, you're paying less than the people who are looking in the eight hundred square foot. It it doesn't make sense to me. But there's still not many more.
We're sticking by a building, follow that, and our back.
Well, the reality is that that the the person who's living in the three thousand square foot condo is gonna pay the developer's paying less to hook up a three thousand square foot condo, and he or she is to hook up an eight hundred square foot condo.
Correct, so within one, maybe the second, said they're gonna be using five times as much water. Which is five times.
But that's all the water rates, right?
Well, this is.
This is just the hookup.
I know, it's the the hookup thing was always had been designed to pay for or it was for the connecting and getting everyone that we have to do for all the infrastructure. That's why we raised it to four hundred, right? To make sure that all those separate connections can be.
All the ongoing construction work is being dealt, because people have anything that rates by time. Some of the idea was it should be about what we pay in this.
The offset.
All right.
Very expensive.
Well, I I just don't see the fairness of I think that's gonna, well, you never know, incentivize, disincentivize somebody who just strikes me so you're just charging a lot more for a smaller condo than you are a large one.
But typically, it won't be family structure. You're gonna have some small units, and then you're gonna have larger ones. There's gonna be a package here. It's not gonna be one building like a dorm where every every unit is eight hundred square feet. Well, and there's reasons why somebody might want an eight hundred square foot dwelling, just because that's the way they'd like to live. That's irrespective of everybody, anybody that moves into this town is gonna pay fourteen thousand dollars to hook up a water. Any individual family. That's life, the way I'm living, Ed.
Right, I both sides, we can find an example, and all this is gonna be in front, right? The parent system, we saw, you know, one, you got million dollar condos that don't pay. That would break your bed. Four bathrooms. And they're using more water than.
But they take the water. And this is, I guess this is just the sort of infrastructure chartering to build. Built. Yes, yeah, all right, well, someone wants to propose the number.
Um, don't concern.
I don't.
The votes will not.
I approve that this would change the current connection to the fourteen thousand per unit building to fourteen thousand per each unit in a multi-unit building.
Second. All right, motion by, this can't deal with second, but still more. All those in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? All right. Or one?
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you for joining me, thank you for bringing.
Thanks, take care.
Good points. The next, right on schedule, the naming policy. Why don't, I'm sorry, I don't seem very good, do I?
No, he's a lot now, he's here.
Okay. So naming policy and our dedication is. Can't feel that.
It's over here, so you can see all your lovely faces while I talk to you. Um, you can receive in your packet an overview of the two topics for this discussion. I'd like to start with the naming policy. Uh, the naming policy itself. And this is in reference to, we're talking about the managers chairs, we're talking about, you know, the Andrew Goodrich Town Hall, we're talking about, you know, the Susan Harrison athletic people, that sort of thing, bigger bigger issues. Uh, I think to to this Conlon and this Devon, Devlin, who about sat with me and revisited this policy with us. And the first thing we want to say is I like the board's temperature on whether or not we ever want to consider naming something. Uh, it is not required that the town accept petitions or or justice, uh, which has merit, merits on it, but if some, this is for large naming opportunities. And um as I laid out, the to me, the biggest pitfall to that is Mr. Smith and the Cooks as the example, Mr. Smith decides that a new wing in the library that can be built uh that's gonna cost three hundred million dollars, who's gonna donate to it, he'd really like to put his wife's name on it, that's her way. That we could be foregoing potential financial contributions to public by not having the if the board thinks that we should do it, we can refer the council and look at lots of different communities that do do this. And the overriding theme is if you do it, it should be uh rare and important and have a consistent um procedure for the vetting of those things. Uh, as we all know from lots of history, it's it becomes a little problematic if you change the line down the road for all of that. So first question is thoughts on whether or not you think we should even contemplate doing naming policy?
What about?
Well, I'd just like to point out that, um, you know, this is complicated, but if we don't have a policy at all, or our policy, and we could, we could, we they're operating under a no policy policy. Right?
Right.
Which has led us to some uncomfortable situations. And so I think that was the aim of this, to this, to start down this this road, because we didn't have a way of saying yea or nay this way. Or that these are the rules you have to come through or reason the the criteria. So on on the other hand, you know, and Karen stated quite well, I look at it as though we I think naming things, big things after people. People are starting to take statues down. They're starting to not name things. They're starting to start to take names off buildings or things like that. I I so I I at any rate, it's 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 very delicate as well, because once you get into, if you have a policy, go through all these various, this is what you have to do, this is what you have to do. Um, I I just think it creates, it's very hard to do all this. And I think there's some other ways of of honoring people. And if someone came forth and said they would be willing to turn the gay school into a town hall, if they were donating forty million dollars, I guess we would consider it, no matter what our policy was. Because at the end of the day, a policy is a policy, it's not a bylaw. So um, you know, and this is so it's not easy. But I just, you know, two cents.
To to follow your thought, the basic state of things being taken down or names being taken off are usually, if you look at the news and the history, are usually for very legitimate reasons over periods of time. And what I was looking at when I was reading these documents, I still think naming is very important. Corporations do it, institutions do it, other municipalities do it. But what what isn't in here is, are there exceptions? Are there callbacks or drawbacks? Are there maybe even time limits that would cause the next board or the next board fifty years from now to have to revisit that big of a naming circumstance? And if you're gonna write a policy, put put some controls in it, so you can always have that, so it's not a struggle to tear the statue down of the particular person that falls into social, moral, whatever disfavor. Uh, that there's ways that the town can revisit that. That might be a way to kind of still be receptive to a potential benefit. But also being able to step out of it if if indeed some of these these issues were to occur. Somebody becomes a felon, for example, that happened to have a building named after ten years ago. I don't know. That's my fault. How do you get in and get out of it? Because the awkwardness is never getting into it. There's always a good person that wants to submit some type of income and name something. That's that's kind of normal. We see it in our schools. But how do you get out of it is maybe your discomfort.
Well, it's 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 more than that, I mean, I I also feel so, it seems so, one of the things that happens is a monetary, financial. Uh, problem to it, which means that not everyone would afford to be able to name.
Well, that's the capitalist, the capitalist theme there.
Yeah, it it's, I I think that's proportionate, and I guess, I guess if someone wanted to, they could run a, uh, totally GoFundMe campaign, but. Then you're talking about popularity contest, and the other thing that gives me pause frankly is that. So much of it seems to relate to athletics and not as much to some of the other. Places that would be worth the rest of this. Uh, and and I look at something like the Maritime Center, I like the way that was handled, they raised the money, they they have a plaque down there. People, you know, get their name on the plaque, depending on how much they they contribute, and it's not named after anyone. But if you if you care about, if you want to go up on the plaque, I mean, I think the same thing would be done with the athletic wheels, for example, that, uh. And and I also would like to encourage people to not think about naming things after. A loved one or or someone they admire, but try to find another way to recognize that through various, I I don't think we make enough, for example. Out of smaller shit funds that are left by people, I think we should know, uh, do more publicity or. Um, that the people can create curriculum or, um. And also the way that the senior center, there are various forums within it that are named.
Same as at the library.
The hyphen, that was one thing that I, I think, it was the one thing we ought to look at this, what we decided is. We have two existing approved naming policies, the trustees, the library trustees, and that's on major. And as a process and a way, we have to accept the donations, uh, that they're given recognition, incomes are all named. And they were, there's a pricing list and all of that, which is sort of, it's sort of in between the naming policy and dedication, so I would, I. This doesn't address that, and it's a small scale, uh, I think we've got those without on their hand, and there's a possibility. Uh, that, you know, we were to build, example, say, you know, in terms of projects, and I think we would follow that model. Yeah, which, you know, at the time of the library construction, there was a lot of pandering, you know, over to we could put a price on what it would cost to be a building. And, um. We, you know, basically, the the bottom line was, somebody have a big enough bag of money, let's sit down and have a conversation, but we're not gonna press it. In the, so, but, yeah, but to your point, there's a, yes, the the flags of the doors, and there's also the Dr. Gorn's, uh, bill. It's a bit of that part of that. So. Um, and the only other thing I'll add is that in in the draft, it, which is not necessarily just financial, like the, you know, there, you know. Whatever, I can't repeat, so I I just made an example of the base house, we decided to name something after. That would be a lot better, since it's historic, and they, uh, I think we could have a new high school, a big high school, you know. That would be something important to exist, historical significance. What are your thoughts?
I agree with a lot of what's been said, I don't think it just can be prices. Other treaters, and I do not want to stop the naming policy, just, but based on the list that I got, all the names that went down. Not one of them going to be named by the, it's only, so we can't stop. And, um, I also am curious, and that brings up equity, right, on many different levels as far as funding equity, which was kind of mentioned. But also, um, you know, how do we get like three hundred eighty years?
Well, there's a lot of stuff there, I don't know if that's named after.
That's a question of.
Maybe.
Yeah. Well, anyway.
So it seems like, so I need to get, I grew up.
I'm doing a policy, I mean, we need a more detailed policy, and I also want to say one more thing, the trail's also, so conservation policy, right? That, I think, was based on a donation, or or it was part of the.
Land donation.
When the land donation, it was with the understanding or the agreement that it be named after.
Well, I think some trails are just red, yellow, blue, and spot, and actually named after people.
Yeah, I think that's been done in the past on a more, but, you know, I'm I'm gonna build this trail, what we're gonna, and then you'll name it after, who's done it, or you know. I would put the, you know, like, yes, so there's the, you know, there's the, you know, a little preserve, preserve. But I would suggest we go into dedications, but that's not what's moving, is to say.
Yeah, it could be, yeah.
You know, let's name trails. Well, and as far as conservation land is concerned, we consider it, the land has usually been named after, who sold it to last. You know, or who owned it last, or, the truth is, I think that there was a point in time where people actually donated, uh, land to the town for nothing. And they took the tax deduction, and in return, it was named after them, um, which makes sense now, but now CDC is buying things.
Right. Right.
And, you know, you look at Mordecai Lincoln, um, and the reason to stay Mordecai Lincoln is he built the original building and had the land. So I think that's gonna be to your point, Susan, a big problem. Um, I'm concerned also about the indigenous people, and that, you know, I I'm not pulling around here, that really, the only thing that I know of is. Wapata. Um. And unfortunately, there's a story attached to the Wapata name, and across the town, the Tober is probably. So.
Good at that, I don't know, alright, so, it seems that we're all in agreement, some sort of a policy. Yeah, I do agree, correct, it'd be more thoughtful about, uh. Because you're right, the kind of willy-nilly sort of quality.
I'm gonna, sorry, I'm lost. Well, I I do remember, um, when we first started down this road. I found a policy similar to this, uh, for the, I got it back, I'm right. Um, from Evanston, Illinois, now, you can imagine, Duxbury Policy was three pages. Uh, Evanston was like twenty-five, but they're up at Northwestern, right, so they just had twenty-five professors on there. So it was very, 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 very thorough, um.
She actually created this policy.
Oh, I think it can be easily imagined. Um, but, there there are things, if if the board wants a naming policy, that you can be much more specific about the person. Should die ten years before, five years before, I mean, you get that completely ready. But it it sort of takes a little bit of the emotional edge off of.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm saying.
Would it not give you more even equitable balance to have criteria like that?
Yeah.
Going in the end, as I said, going out, it it needs to.
Well, you know, you may want a scoring sheet of stuff like, but you do, just a way to do with RFPs, and that is, does this represent. You know, a a minority group or group that have not been honored yet, um, does this, this person, I I think, so.
I agree.
So.
So, what I'm hearing is rescinding should be included, what a pressure for rescinding, uh, a name, which we have examples of that. Um, did look at all of those different ways you can do it, I would, I would, uh. I would propose to add a full and off period, that no, something like, you know, no naming proposal we consider in in terms of death. It's no, actually, there's three divided, it was several of us. I would, we just kind of, there were things like, you have to gather a hundred signatures, like, that's just a popular, that's not. A prediction, we discuss, you know, and we don't, that's, that's pretty, we can go back and look at those, and if you are so clearly that you wanna mark up what you have. Um, we definitely love.
I remember that, next university equity committee meeting I have to attend.
Yeah.
I'm not only gonna bring about the language thing we talked about in our last meeting about the speech, I'll also bring this up.
Right, right. Yes.
And let me see if I can get some of those people in the committee to help move with that.
Yes.
Completely, the balancing, the equity balancing aspect of things, and maybe you could play out some of the, some of the cultural.
Right. Yep, and we did, you know, I'm still glad about that, because we did promise that we would run this, but almost was about that.
My turn to, yes, thank you.
And that's not, so. Well, the other thing is, I I don't know what people probably understand, but there is a no naming policy in the school, but. They don't name any, you know, and that's why I I'm glad with that, we could just say, our policy of the town situation could be.
Yeah. Right. You don't name any.
Yeah, but.
The gate school.
Well, that is not, that was done, you can't, you can't go start, you can't go back.
But, so they just recently have.
Um, yes.
Okay.
Well, except, well.
So they named all the schools after.
They, that's became a bit of a to-do, shall we say, when they built the school. And the Gates family actually came in and logged the board, it's a big, to, it was a vote of course, like, to name the new school, the Gate School.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, uh, so. But, you know, you can't name things after natural features and.
So we could override and name that new school.
That's what I'm saying, I don't know, but we can, I don't know. We think we would have authority to do that for now, to all the men and women.
Well, they haven't no naming policy, so we would end up naming this school.
Well, they're gonna have.
And line of school.
They're gonna have, so. Wait, wait. Yeah, I think that has on the bar, it's a post, the community, the town, the best. So, how about the mission school?
Well, we called it after the coaching.
I thought it was on the.
Alright, we're getting.
Okay, we're getting, alright, okay, the next, so when you guys want to do a policy, we need to revise that we're not going to the policy. The second piece is dedication opportunities, I would suggest we don't call them memorial opportunities, it's not necessarily a memorial. Uh, in the past, we've always had, well, until very recently, we had a list, uh, there you are. Uh, this is the list from twenty fourteen, that, you know, Mrs. Smith would call the town, and say, um, I'd like to, my dog died, and I wanna put a flag somewhere. And the office would say, here you go, here are all the places you can, you can acknowledge your child, or your pet, which is. Right. Your child, you know, and this is what it will cost, and you can put a bench in this park, and say to Fluffy, from my, my, my beloved. Or, you know, whatever it is, it really is, uh, and it's listed in the parts, we can kind of, have things, the people just wanna, you know. Acknowledge somebody's good deed, or whatever. So, we are.
So you're opposing to change that to acknowledgements or dedications?
Dedication opportunities.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Just dedication opportunities, that's one. So the question before the board is, this first, the first decision treaty is. The board, we do not need to have any dedication opportunities. We do not need, if somebody calls and says, I want a planetary, I want a adventure, the board could say, no longer do that, that's a little. Um, the opportunity, and 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 the arguments for that have been, our town's starting to look like a cemetery. That was, that, I'm just telling you about it right, right, do we want to have every place have, well, these flags that say all these things? Is it just sign, sign noise, is it, you know, visual pollution, is that, so there are those who will say, don't bother with them. The pros are, we have many, many ways of improving public property that we just don't have that platform for. And if we thoughtfully come onto the list, which incidentally, the library has. Uh, already done, the library trustees have said, we really like that you see, like, they just very carefully said, this is where they play the high ground. We could price this, put this on a new list, and this is gonna put Fluffy's plaque on it and pay for it. So the opportunity cost, when we can't do some improvements, uh, because it's just the extra we pay for. Um, and there are lots of people, I mean, how many calls, I mean, typically, there are quite a few calls. Yeah, for things, I mean, the shell takes most of them, whether it's, you know. It's not, and you get the pricing, and kind of wins people out, right, you get the pricing, but we still get a lot of calls, constantly, now, where can we go? So we just added the Mordecai Lincoln, um, benches at law, and they priced them, we know what it is, and now they have to do a lottery, because. So.
Sorry, people want.
Yeah, so if the board, if the board wants to continue dedication opportunities. What I would suggest is we would send out, um, inquiries to all the logical boards and committees. To ask them to identify who's appropriate in their purview, and then figure out the price, and they create a list that the board would then list. And they would have it there, and sell them away.
I think you, I think you you should do that, I think, though, if I just, just kind of stunned by the comment that somebody thinks that we turned the place into a cemetery. They either need some anti-depression help, because I don't look at it that way, I look at it as our, part of our heritage, part of the. The fabric that makes this community and the people that made this community. And I would give the respect to a reader back, and and say, yeah, nice that I know that that person was here. For whomever, what, wherever, or fluffy, if you want. And it's it's entirely, it's, we bring people together, it's a social thing that we want to do, that that makes you feel better. So I agree, I would, I think we should hit the boards to put up their lists, and let's look at the list.
I think as long as there are amenities that are useful in, and or informational, for example, uh. I don't, I don't see the. Yeah, we already have, like, all of the, you know, how you apply, you know, like, what are the specs, all that stuff, that's already been designed.
You have the brackets, but working on the benches itself, it's not like it's like.
Red meat stuff.
It's not like it's, you know.
That's not actually, these little box, yeah.
Yeah, it's very subtle.
And it can be a lot of words.
It can, it's, there's many of them, so I'm okay with it.
Um, totally, and plus, we keep that draw, I mean, never mind.
May I have an exclusion to this policy? No flag holes.
No what?
No flag holes.
Oh, flag.
Because someone has to come, normally flag holes, because someone's gonna, we have a not raise and flow up and lower them.
How are you gonna have, uh, you know.
I'm just saying that about this whole deal.
Well, I think, I think the best way to handle that is, I have a decision of of the board, yeah. It's like, it's not subject to dedication.
You're free to make your own, I said, for, for thousand dollar planters that act. Our people, it's too good, thousand dollars, they can't afford that, they had someone, they donate it, it looks great, or, you know, those little.
I think it's kind of committees, currently.
Okay, so they will pursue that, that will take a while. Thank you, board.
Alright, we can't learn anything, because it's, I don't know, we have a policy, we have new policies, we're working progress, what policy? Nancy, you are up.
And this is incredibly easy and fast, the only question is whether or not you want to, um, look at budget policies.
I read.
Always. We discussed it at the retreat, if you want to move forward with potentially revamping them, then we'll schedule it for future meetings, and we'll give you more documentation. If you find policies that are replaceable, probably submit, and never know what we're discussing.
I read, I read the two policies, copies, that were like two thousand twelve and whatever, um, they all make good sense. All I came away with is, is there something that maybe you would want to update because of the way. The financial packages and the world of finance has changed since then, that's all I wanted to say.
The original discussion back in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one about financial policies stemmed from standard reports. Are, are nature names for. Our, our initial name for creating was good, and we said, what does it take to make it excellent? And they said specifically, your, your financial policies are good, they're not excellent. So we simply gave us an example of what excellent is, and the twenty twenty one draft we got is from another community that.
That got me.
Excellent.
Oh, we're getting excellent. I'm hoping you might notice that already. Yeah.
So what, what am I, what's going on today? Updated.
What do you mean?
That's why I was.
I'm gonna win. That was my aspect on why I didn't believe that a lot of triple A.
The only way we'll all be getting a triple A is the barber service or twenty one percent. And when I'm in the.
Observs as, as a total.
The naming policy.
Yeah, their naming devices, increase the name.
Well, I guess I just had the question that, first of all, who, who audits this?
Me. Actually, the, the, um, private agencies request them and they see a board finding that, so, so they.
Okay. Okay.
If we decide to do it, it's not gonna probably be a one and done meeting. We'll probably break them up and then give you detailed information about each section. And then things to look at, so we're looking at reserves, what are our reserves, what other reserves do other communities have, what those levels are, and what. So that's why if you wanna go forward, we'll bring it back up and get all that detail and start scheduling them for your meetings. If you're not interested, probably.
And the other question I have is, if, if, what does that, there's. The document from two thousand twelve had a lot of stuff in it that was not in the document.
Right.
Yeah, it had tendencies that don't need to be changed. So like our post, um, compliance bracket, that was changed. So we just amended to any, um, changes to the financial policies.
Okay, um. I guess that was my question. It didn't look like there was anything that was completely, we need to do that.
It, it, it's more like a different layout.
Yeah.
And a different, we didn't know what he. I completely have to the board.
Well, I'm not going to that little triple A.
Okay, it's healthy. Pelvis, it's not, I think it's our.
Things have changed and since those were adopted.
Um, the best thing for the town.
Sticks, that's usually something.
It's, it's that school problem. It was like chapter nineteen or. It was this, I think it was at the end of the first original document. It was some media problem, school not reporting something.
Yeah, but now we'll get it fixed. So.
Yep.
Obviously, even if you.
Thank you. Can I make a request? Could we talk about these policies early in the evening? On a ten.
Oh, yeah, I, you, you would have, no, seriously, I would.
On serious.
We'll find a way to, I remember, it was.
We can check it out.
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever.
I read.
Whatever the walk is.
Yeah, make everyone sit through it with us.
All right, next, we have old gates for use study referral, the affordable housing trust.
So, uh, the board had talked about, uh, had the old gates for use coordination compartment. Part of the architek, you spoke about it at that time, that it would be good if you got import from the global housing. This is if you wanna pay a local to send it to a global housing and have them report back to you in the area with. Or you can just send it for a global housing, that's a very appropriate idea. You put it in a vote fashion in case you want it to be more formal. And you have a, a timeline for them to be evacuated.
This is just, this, we're just getting their opinions. It's not, well, this is good, this is bad, this is terrible.
Yeah, well, so everything that bothers them sent to us. They were giving you a presentation and then Barge may present it as well.
So as, as lately is under that committee? Yes, sorry. After we had that presentation, I went to the next meeting and they were very curious to know what was presented.
Right.
And I gave them a couple of points and things, but I came away from that saying, well, these people are very focused. On this specific responsibility. It's not gonna hurt anybody to get their written letter. So I think it would be the right thing to do. We can let them go and do the full presentation, then get their feedback too, because there's still so many unanswered ways to go here, uh, in my mind, so. I would favor it.
I absolutely agree. Okay.
Would you like to?
Well, now, I, I, there might be anyone from the public that wants to speak on this, yes or no? Okay, so I mean, I will say this, the, um, again, so this is not, uh, oh, sorry. Again, this is not saying that we're, that we approve a plan, don't approve a plan. This is really, we're just saying. Say, hey, group over there, you take a look at it, say, if this is good, this is bad, it's crazy, and it's wonderful, and they go back to us and say. Whatever, it's just not, this is just sent to them. All right. Now we're taking.
We would select for request the affordable housing, request by there and with, um, housing options provided in the old gates for use study by October fifteen twenty five.
Right. I was gonna say, that was, that was, what was in favor?
I.
I. Let's, let's close that up more, Nancy, what do you think?
I think it's time.
It's our final chance. Hey, then, we're missing a bit more. If you look. Take a look if I can find a page.
Like an article on these buildings.
All right.
Oh. That they have for the store.
Unpaid for our bills.
A, a lot of things came on and more made so come on.
Yeah, I first.
See, and you said, do, and then your next meeting, you hold, which articles you wanna hold for one, this is just closing it a lot, right? For anything that come along, anyone know what to start, just to say, no questions.
Or you do have a dollar. That was my question, the dollar part of that, and it's a. But it is.
And that you didn't describe that. When you get into.
Well, we need the information from, from where are they.
It should be coming along. I'll reach, I'll reach out.
Okay.
So none of these are written, so.
No, it's gonna be.
The stabilization.
That's all up to you, up to the board's desire and, um, the next meeting, you decide what are our holders, state, what are we going, and how do you want to get the cards.
Yeah, we adjust those numbers.
Absolutely. You just know, this is the way I think, so I, it's November, so I started to drive more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe if I must, Mark.
Oh. All right, um, I mean, I don't see anything else. Was people tired? It's a big deal, it's a town meeting, it's a tickle time. I'm good with it. Yeah, I mean, we, and for folks at home, I can go preview some of the things we're thinking. Unpaid, uh, yeah.
Oh, is that?
Prior bills.
I'm paying bills.
Uh, well, there's an amendment to the regional school agreement, there's some more, uh, capital improvement plans, border and Lincoln, water meters, septic wells, um, Cedar Point, uh, possible matching funds. Right, we sense some debt, which is good. I'm trying to buy some time, this can't go too good, or?
But.
You're good?
I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, I'll take a motion. Motion for the board. Propose a show town meeting, bill on Monday, November eighteen, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Mr. Fillmore, secondly, signed up by these hairs. Next.
I think.
Do we, we did not hear from Sister City, Sister City, but we got plenty of space. I, I will just be honest, I have full faith after looking at the backup.
This is the news, Quinn.
Wait.
Mary Lumendaas Quinn.
Yeah.
I just want to wait for her to come back. I feel very comfortable looking at her today.
Um, well, well, she wasn't able to. Uh, yes, but she just didn't. Did she have?
She's not, she still wants to be on the. Maybe.
Yes. Yeah, maybe.
I think we should bear a question.
Yeah, yeah.
We're trying to.
All right, we'll wait on that.
We had that.
Yes.
Oh, we're, yeah, we'll hold on her. And then we want to discuss waterways.
Yes, thank you.
So. We currently have. How many total applicants?
We have three.
Three.
Total applicants. We have one member who is associated number, who is requesting to be a poll member. We have one member who's a poll member that should be liked to be named as an associate member. So that's time when you can switch with that, correct? You really don't have an open position on this committee.
Okay.
However, you can have additional associate members.
So the choices are. Do you do this, the swap, do the switch, not do the switch? Make some more people associates, don't make anyone an associate? Or not accept anyone, or someone?
See, that's why I'm confused by the language. Thank you for the bylaws. The bylaws said up to nine members. The members, but it doesn't say. There's four members and three associates. It doesn't say that in theory. What's in practice, right? Five, one, two, three, four. We currently have nine members, one of which is the harbor master. Oh, okay, so we, so everyone. So like nine. Nine poll members. Currently. So we have no. Correct. We have currently three associate members. One of which is speaker who is asking to be reading the proceeding. TJ, Mal Bestie, who is asking to be the poll member. And then Kevin Jordan is also associated. I mean, you have three associate members. Mike given to poll member is asking to move to associate. I think you have a lot of things to share on.
I'm also keeping all that in.
Okay, the Nerdity wants to refer this to bylaws because it's very wrong. Because the way this is, it's nine members total, how dare. There's no, there's nothing on it, and associates doesn't say, did you have routine associates? It doesn't say. So the, so the one, we're gonna need to fix, fix that because I'm.
Okay, well.
Yeah, but, but the practice has, the practice has been a great social.
They've had more associates. They currently have.
I think it's mine that associates is, as long as the committee is functional, probably two bodies of group. But they didn't very functional with associates.
They have been very functional.
Weird thoughts.
And we have three applicants, um, the other two, which one was the one, there's one who's currently on the bylaw committee, right?
That was, uh, Nicholas.
Yeah.
It's Demasco. Demasco has been wonderful, and the bylaws have been doing, I'm trying to pick the chair to call him back on this, like it's an issue right now. So he's the, he's very weird to work, and I think he's. I don't think it's a cop song, but I felt very.
Okay.
Thoughts?
What are your thoughts? You were about to say something.
I was concerned and I'll be quick, but the temperament of one of the candidates came. I just can't remember which one it was. I'm sorry.
Not the one on the bylaws. It was the Thomas, our man.
Yep.
Was stellar. Yes. Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, the way I look at it, you have a committee and there's different needs on the committee and, um. First, I want, for me to point someone on the committee, I want them to understand, like, we're at the death of the committee, like, what they're, what they're doing. Whether it's policy or.
And what they should be doing.
And what they should be doing, correct. And I did think that Nicholas Demasco did understand that as far as policy, had their answers on the plan. I also think Mike DeMayo has, like, exceptional experience. Um, there's a lot of folks that have been on the committee for a while and, um, I think they were kind of due for turnover in the future, so I would then. I would think it wouldn't be that bad to have additional associate members if you're due for turnover, because the whole purpose is for the associates to kind of learn for a couple of years and then, um, and there's a lot of budgeting, um. Requirements for water as well as a lot of policy requirements. So I thought those were the two is two strong, is, you know, it's.
I agree.
I agree.
Our third amendment for them to be, uh.
But I mean, that's then a question, not associates. And I mean, there's another thing, and I, I do, and I will take this as something to make sure that the committee understands in the future. It was asked, I think, a couple of times for the attendance, because that's also something that we should be focused on, right? Like, if we have members that, um, are, are more frequently absent, and we do not get that information. So I think for the next year, on a committee this large, well, we have so many people eager to step up. I do think it's important to understand the attendance of the, like, how many, like, I don't know, you have twelve meetings, this one attendance, it's like that. Well, you know, like, maybe, maybe we should have someone step up, so, um.
Well, that's just.
That's something we're doing for a lot of the other committees too.
I was just gonna say that, the truth is that committees are supposed to take attendance.
They are.
The chair is supposed to take attendance and the chair is supposed to report on attendance. At the, at the time they write their ending report. It's not that anyone's trying to kick anyone off, but I mean, if, if you put a committee where it's clear that someone just doesn't come and participate, and now that we've got remote possibilities, there's really no reason for people to not be able to fulfill commitment. Um, but there are some committees clearly that it's really urgent for them.
Yeah, we're having some formations on some areas, and then we, we need to understand, you know, if the, we do have a lot of people on volunteers. Um, I would, I mean, I would be okay with that.
With those, those, I don't know.
Dave wants to say something.
All right.
Uh, good evening, everybody. I was there a little bit earlier listening to, uh, Mike DeMayo talk. Uh, just listening into the conversation, the one thing I did want to mention is that, uh, I was never contacted for the, um, attendance, uh, records. Um, but I've been taking them every month and I have a spreadsheet on who has and who hasn't been attending the meetings.
Oh, good.
So we do have that available. Uh, I just, I've been having a lot of communication issues, uh, with Michelle, and I met her after our meeting tonight, and both of us seem that our emails are not making it to each other, so I'm sorry about the, uh, the, the poor communication with her. So we're trying to, and I sent Susan a spreadsheet tonight of, uh, of our updates and where we feel we need to be. Um, thank you for the work that you're doing. Uh, we do have a really good, uh, good team and process. And if you would need any more, uh, and questions answered, I'm here and just listening in, so thanks for your time.
Thank you.
There's no issue with, like, being responsible?
No.
I didn't think so, but I just. Uh, there's no reason I'd stay, or is it not really assessed before, but he's gonna be suspended forever. So I was sitting there that fast, most fair as well.
Yes.
Because you know, it's our.
Oh, I'm looking at exactly what you said, yes, exactly what I just said, though.
So what, so like, the mission is like, uh?
Yeah, I would like, um, Nicholas DiMarsco.
That's a.
DiMars. Yeah, sorry, I missed a couple syllables there.
Must be, uh, to be associates.
I hope.
Okay, so that's close on table.
And then now that, now that, and I apologize, I didn't, all I heard was they need the tenants, so, uh, I was gonna say that it's gonna be something you can figure out in the future, but, um. Yeah, I think they're both very, um, I think they will add. Many. Possibly.
Excellent. Alright, I'll take a motion.
Move, well, uh, move to appoint Mike DeMayo, I think DiMascio as associate numbers for the water, place the patient for two years, successor state.
Ms. Canhill second by.
Second.
Wait, you also have to move to through, um, Terrell, Melvesti, uh, yes, you all.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we'll do this one.
I didn't know you were gonna do last thing done and I'll move, move, move then.
Now we want this to take a long.
Oh, do you, this one?
And further moved.
And further moved to appoint Harold Melvesti as a poll member of the waterways commission for term of three years, for ability successor state. And to reappoint the waterways commission for term of three years, successor state. Uh, State Guard, Highway Fredericksburg, David Sopowski, um, David Haley and to make Mike Given as an associate member.
Second.
Thank you for this on service.
Yes.
May I?
We have a motion, but we won't second it, yes, we just want Ms. Canhill.
Oh, sorry, yeah, the point of word, so how many people are being reappointed to success? Four are being, four are being reappointed as poll members, okay, guys on this, okay, yeah, thank you. Sorry.
Okay, alright, so we have a, oh, it's a very good question. In a second, in by Ms. Harrison. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Alright. Next, three layer license.
I put that out of the. Rule for the new hearing line layers license for. Shlipo site about. Seven.
But I'm just gonna second by, I'm, I'm now all's in favor, aye, unanimous. Michelle liaise.
Ooh, I have liaise.
Shall we like liaise?
Athena.
Uh, turn?
Yes, maybe.
Oh, okay.
Just say no. We're just a little.
Lots, um, I just have two quick ones, uh, the bylaw commission is partnering again with the rec department to do a kids rodeo this Saturday. Uh, for grades two, board reception, sign up for the rec department. Um, and the, I think I accept us to the front garden and the payers have been, the front garden is going to be placed at the library and the payers have been set, so our, and this is the library, so. Uh, but I'd kind of like to ask the board, uh, to bring in the tier forty-four, uh, group for a very brief update at our next meeting. Including potential partner on Sheriff Oak Road and I have talked to the town administrator and see to some, the board needs to vote on that project. How it will be financed for it, will be financed whether CPC or through, um, capital budget is obviously up to the board to decide. But I did talk to a CPC chair and depending on how the, the proposal, the design is done, it may well qualify to be funded through CPC, but no. We'll have to see what that, that looks like.
You're learning, you're learning.
The part, the, the partnering specifically. Um, I would ask the board, um, to postpone whole pathway update until probably the first week of October. We originally scheduled for September twenty seventh, but they, they need to have a meeting to talk about the report from the consultants, you know, um, I think I mentioned before that it was a little bit, um, it's a little disturbing as to whether or not we can solve that problem back there. And, uh, I did meet with, uh, the chair of planning, board and planning, uh, and development director. Um, they're telling me that accessory dwellings will be a hot topic coming up for especially not this time of year, but the next one. The issue of short-term rentals also has to be up in some way, so. And then the, when we talked about the similar project, it was situated, it sort of raised a few, um, questions. Thank the board versus the, the MDTA zoning, so within town hall, they're working on making sure that, that the, our store and our regulation zoning are in tune with each other.
The picture is much.
Yes, yes, yes. And finally, the CPC, it was like they're just bringing in two projects, um, for, for special funding and they're not big ones, but they'll be.
Yeah, I want to try to.
Um, yes, I, I understand that. One is, I think more money for, oh, I know what it is, more money for the trail of rehab that, um.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
The bids came in, anything, it came in high, bad and that, so I think that's probably. My step.
But yeah, oh, yeah, so I'm, I love that jerk of work on this, yeah.
Yeah, if, if anyone hasn't seen it, I showed it to Jamie tonight, Susan, I could have worn on, but you might not have, it might have been around the time. I have, I have.
Yeah, cool.
Yeah.
Great. Anything else?
I just have a bunch of these, um, these tomorrow night, so I'm gonna try and go from the book to the next, we'll see. Most importantly, I wanna go to is Sister City, Ireland at six o'clock at the C Center, and the A Jeff at six thirty, and the store, which is at seven. At six thirty, so it's gonna be kind of, I'm gonna hold myself over, but I have nothing new to report, and I will comment how much I enjoyed. Reliving the White House with wonderful God that everybody did. And just look at wonderful even, just, we could all follow that, if you have correspondence, just.
Before we move on, I forgot about Susan's.
Guest of liaise.
I got the liaise, you only is first. Um, I just, I, I did want to, um, I saw on the potential list of things to discuss on September tenth, it's the winter vine, I'm gonna be away on the tenth, will not be able to attend at all. And I would request that if we can postpone that, I very much want to be a part of that conversation. Um, so I just, I'm now the first time I've had a show postponed on February. Thank you for that, it's it. It's dinner.
Okay, I have a lot, I have a bunch, I'll go quick, um, I have, um, so Morica Lincoln, they've been steady cleaning out those houses and cataloging everything, they got the speed limit, it's Excel sheets with tags and all sorts of things. And then files of like, what's up, Nancy, you're gonna love it, you're gonna love it, um, and then files of things that it's just pitched out and then they got the files for, um, we were to do a, um, a townyard sale, that would be hot. Um, and, um, there are also the CPC application is actually specifically for historic architect to give us, um, feedback on that, which I think will be helpful and people will definitely use the first survey, the like structural slash fire safety survey, which they're doing right now for that. And then town meeting, the Morica Lincoln is specific to the, um, caretaker house and modifications to that such that you would actually have a tenant caretaker in that house. Um, so that's Morica Lincoln, um, Shellfish Relay we're doing separate, that's in August, maybe early September, but that's exciting. Um, Concom, I also, I went to a, um, Concom policy meeting, um, they had a no, um, nothing to vote on, like no actual houses were not, whatever. Plan, um, questions, it was just really about their policy and policies and then some of the maintenance, for maintenance that they're doing, which is the money that they have, the thirty thousand dollars that we gave them twice as much, but. They requested to do maintenance, so they're, um, steady doing maintenance on, um, properties and also, um, um, specific, some properties need a lot more maintenance. So there's more like thinking of larger brands, um, like the, like the river yard there, some of, some of the, um, forestry, river yard, some of the things, or even some of the ones that at least have top of the money, larger investment. So, um, that was great and they're fully staffed, so, um, and, um, I do think that their staff that they have are great. And they're really trying to bring efficiencies, so they're kind of. Kind of beating potatoes of the, of the operation, you know, the, um, the requests that they get such that they can then focus. So I thought that was really good, fun time, so. But I was on vacation, so I missed a whole bunch of.
Go to more stones.
What was on type three, I'll start with a very quick and easiest one, uh, this is from Xfinity. Uh, dear members of the board, we're committed to keep you and our customers informed about changes to Xfinity TV, accordingly, please note, following price increase, our providers is implementing on September ninth, twenty twenty four. Stars will be increasing the cost of its stars subscription from nine dollars, nine ninety-seven per month to ten ninety-nine per month. Customers are receiving this notice of this change in their bill, customers subscribe to Stars through Xfinity, they will see the new cost reflected on their next bill unless they cancel the subscription. Um, these other two are a little bit long and I'll try and read them with this.
Some, some, some.
You can summarize.
Summarize, yeah.
Summarize.
Then we have a letter from Peter Manigan. He's offering his vision of a solution to the cohesive situation, harbor situation, uh, basically, uh, basically, we would, they would recognize our right to the, to the harbor, our, our side of the line, but we would yield the oyster bins to another part of the, of our waterways. And then cohesive for that would help us with hopefully the sewer connections, that's his compromise, that's his.
Which is where we started, we can.
Way back.
Yeah.
I should also, not that we have to answer this, but he should tune into our meetings where we are working through our situations. So it's in the.
I, I wrote that.
Okay, great.
And the last one is a, uh, it's a letter, uh, email from Susan Green, who is a property butter down by the beach school in that property area. That she is, uh, very expressing her concern, they've had property there for a hundred and twenty-five years, expressing her concern about the idea of putting multi-family housing on the property. Um, she expresses a lot of the same concerns we've heard from ourselves as well as other people. Um, maybe she should just know it would not make any decisions yet.
Yeah, you're right.
Yes.
And that we sent it to.
Yes, yeah, so.
Tune in for me.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you, alright, now, we are not turning, we have to go into executive session.
No, you gotta do minutes, you got.
Oh, we have minutes, I'm sorry. I'll take the motion on the minutes. Sorry.
Move to select board, select board minutes for July ninth, twenty twenty four, July twenty-third, twenty twenty five, July, um, select board retreat meeting and August sixth, twenty twenty four meeting. And which is accepted not for this executive session meeting and from July ninth, twenty twenty four.
Ms. Canhill, Ms. Harrison, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, now, it's unanimous, read this one. Oh, I got that. The chair declares that the select, so, so here's what happens, I say this and then I have a motion, so the chair declares that the select board move into executive session pursuant to six, the meeting law, if it's a purchase, exchange, lease of value of real property. Now declare that open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the select board in connection with this matter, Sunset Road, the board will not reconvene in the session. I have a motion. Do I read the motion?
You have to.
No, I get it twice.
I think it, I think someone, I'll.
It's on.
Okay. Move that the select board move into executive session pursuant to purposing that the open meeting law to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property and on your end. And the board will not vote reconvene in the session.
Second, alright, move.
We need a vote.
I think we need a little.
We need a vote.
Yes.
So that's it. Oh, I'm close. Second.
Vote all over. Vote, we are, we are, I'm sorry.
Exactly. Exact section, I moved it second, roll call.
Okay.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison, and Ms. Phil Mark.
Yes.
Canhill, yes.
Yes.
Thank you, that was all good.